In compliance with chapter 231, public law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this board meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in a notice of January 7, 2019. Set notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to an enough and talented clerk, advertised in enough and signed in Starlet on January 17, 2019, posted on district website. This is official. Do you have some stand for flagging? Mr. Coates, if you have a microphone, please.
Mrs. Kierkegaard, here.
Here.
Mr. Coraer, here.
Mr. Pizenski, here.
Mrs. Quirk, here.
Mr. Riley?
Here, since 6:15, like we all should be.
Mr. Coraer, here.
Mr. Allen, here.
Mr. Quon, here.
Here. Okay, give me the public minutes, please. All in favor? Okay, just real quick from the meeting this morning, we just moved presentations around. So the first part of presentation will be the verbal review, followed by the performance review, and then the mock report with Dr. Walsh here. Any correspondence this evening?
None this evening.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. May, so this presentation is...
So, first up this evening, our presentation is on the program review. I think you all know that on an ongoing basis, we monitor curriculum instruction and assessment. And as part of that program review process, we're always in a different place in our review throughout a five-year cycle. Tonight, we're going to hear the report from the science program review from Carly Johnson, our pre-K to 12 science coordinator, and the health and physical education program review from coordinator, again, pre-K to 12, Robin Powell. Both of them are going to give you some insight into process, the outcomes, and recommendations. You need us to come down if you have a presentation on this group, so we need to... Thank you, guys.
It's a little better. I'd like to welcome everybody to this presentation. We'll be... a few things, but we just wanted to speak to the program review process first, myself and Janine, just a little bit. As you know, we had a cycle that came to us from our last strategic plan, and that cycle was developed to look at our academic programs over five years as the state recommends. And during that cycle, each department goes through a review process that begins about the summertime and extends until the next summertime. And it's very important to understand that each of our departments is in a different phase of this process. So right now, if you will follow, we have actually year four, that's the year of this program review, we have science and phys ed in this program review, and in front here they will develop a draft curriculum. Moving into next year, we'll go into the board models, right? And our other departments are at different places. Mathematics and World Language are just finishing their draft year, ELA two years ago, this is actually the first year of that. Social studies will be reviewed in two years, and next year we have FPA, CTE going up for review. So we're continuously going through this process and sharing it with people from the state and the county, as well as the community, our findings, as well as what the data looks like coming out of this review.
And just to give you a little bit more background on the actual program review process, so year four is really when we almost take sort of a magnifying glass and we look closely at a specific content area. So that's really at the heart of the program review, is first looking at the current curriculum and doing what we call sort of a gap analysis. So looking at what we currently do, our instructional practices, and comparing that against the standards. Are there updating standards? Are there things in our curriculum document that we may need to tweak based on what we know to be best practices? Also during program review, our coordinators develop guiding questions, so these will kind of frame out the work that they'll do throughout the whole year. So this process actually happens for an entire academic year. Our coordinators also survey teachers, they survey parents, because they want to get sort of a 360 analysis of what those different stakeholder groups' perceptions are of our current curriculum program. After that, they look at student performance data, so they look specifically at data within their content area, both standardized assessments as well as their classroom assessments, and they look to see if there are trends there as far as maybe specific standards that we're doing really well in, that we would want to keep addressing in the curriculum, and if there's other standards that we would need to kind of tweak our curriculum to better meet. We also look at what other model districts do. So we look at high-performing districts in the area across the country, and we look at what curriculum and resources they're using, and we ask ourselves if that's something that we may consider adopting as well to ensure that we're meeting our students' needs. And then the final step is what you're going to see tonight, which is where we have our coordinators present to the public their findings. So with that, I'd like to introduce Carly Johnson, our coordinator of science, who's going to present her program review, and then Ms. Robin Powell will present on health and PD.
Thank you, everybody. So I was very, very fortunate walking into this process, because before, in our last curriculum review, there were a number of changes in the field of science and regards to our standards and our programming. And in the last cycle for review when science was up, there was a lot of work put in to make sure that our children were meeting the standards and making sure that they were doing science hands-on. So I really have the privilege of having interpreted something great and being able to make it even better. So if you look at our guiding questions, as the state introduced new standards back in 2016 and when they were making changes to assessment, we wanted to make sure that as they continued to change their standards, we responded to that. So one of our guiding questions was to make sure that K-12, are we aligned to our student learning standards? And then on top of that, are we aligned and paced appropriately the expectations of our model curriculum that the state expects from us? Where are we? Are we meeting our benchmarks by our students having the experiences that they expect them to have? Are we going above and beyond that? When we look further, we want to also look at assessment. Last year, the state changed the assessments, and they're really looking for students to be able to analyze data and make important and informed decisions, and speak about science in an eloquent and informed manner. So we want to make sure that when we are assessing our students, we are giving them the opportunity to be able to do that, to express themselves, to be able to analyze data, and talk about patterns that they're seeing in the explorations that they're doing. We also want to look if we're offering opportunities for specialized learning, are we being efficient for our learners, are we offering opportunities for all of our learners, and are we being responsible in the physical climate? For best practices, essentially, we want our students speaking science, we want our students hands-on doing science, we want them thinking about science, we really want them to get in there and get their hands dirty. So when we are looking, we want to make sure that we have anchors that are, why? Why is this happening? Why is this guy here? Why is there a rainbow? Why does this frog do this? We want to root our programming in phenomenon that are all around our kids every day, to give them the opportunity to really understand how the world around them works. So we root our explorations in phenomenon that are real world, we want to make sure that they can think broadly, we want to make sure that they can speak eloquently and clearly, as I said before, we want to make sure that we are taking part in data collection. We want our children to be able to not only collect the data, but to be able to look at a graph and look at numbers and have their own thinking, does this make sense? Does this not make sense? So we really have put in a tremendous amount of effort to ensure that our students have these responses, these experiences, and are responsible to them and accountable for the work that they're doing. We want to make sure also that we are working from a broad lens and that we are allowing our students to connect to other areas in the curriculum. We are using non-fiction in text, we are talking about reading strategies, if we're talking about the outbreak of a disease, we're relating that to a specific time period, social studies, we're really trying to give them those broad perspective that we possibly can. And we want to make sure at the end of the day that our students are walking away at the dinner table when they get home with you, and you say, what did you do at school and school today? They cannot only tell you what they did, but they can tell you why they did it and what they found out. Our needs, we needed to make sure that we are in line with the updated model curriculum, and we are just this much off, we just have to accommodate to the changes that the state makes since our last curriculum review. We want to make sure we incorporate online resources for our learning, especially at the elementary level, and we want to find a new K-5 program. We are looking at mystery science, which is an awesome phenomenon-based program that we think our students are really going to have a wonderful time with. We want to redesign our assessments again to reflect that need for students to be able to think and analyze and share their thoughts, and we want to provide articulation maps, K-12, to make sure that we truly are spiraling, and as a child is exposed to a topic over a period of time, maybe in second grade and in sixth grade, then in ninth grade, that those topics are increasing in rigor, and the student is able to display that in their understanding. And finally, for our programmatic shifts, as I just mentioned to you, K-5 will receive new programming, we're looking at mystery science. All teachers K-5 will have their own supplies in-house. We have to share between buildings right now, and we will no longer have to do that. So that is going to provide an amazing amount of autonomy for our teachers to be able to do what they need to do, and really, really raise the bar on the learning and be able to make connections as they fit within their room, and not have to perform through a schedule of sharing. Middle school education, specifically what we say middle school, we are going to look at at 6-8 for continuity purposes with the state curriculum. We want to make sure that we are meeting the demands of the model curriculum, we want to make sure that we are shifting the units in the appropriate places. Again, not to anything we haven't done, but because the state has made changes since our last curriculum, we want to make sure that we're appropriately where we need to be. We want to make sure that we have benchmarks, so that we can say to everybody, where are we at this point in time, and no matter what school a child goes to, we are ensuring that by November 1st, everybody is in the same place. And infusion of problem-based learning and being able to make the most real-life experiences, not just for the students to do a project on them, but for us to really be able to say, why does this happen? And learn about the topic as we are examining the true, real-life situations that are occurring. Thank you. Ms. Robin Powell is up next with health and physical education.
We need you, everyone. A little overview, this is a extremely condensed version of our program review, so we'll give you the highlights. In, this is our second time through a program review, we have made significant progress since our first program review. We have grown tremendously in health and phys ed since our last program review, and it's been an all-out team effort, just so you know, to get us where we are today. So it's exciting to go through the process again, because you can never stop growing. So what guided us through this second review was for us to ask ourselves, is our curriculum sequential, comprehensive, and aligned to the standards, both health and phys ed? We asked ourselves, does our instruction support the curriculum, provide positive and active engagement, is it inclusive? We asked ourselves, do our assessment measure student growth? And we also asked ourselves, do our facilities and class size and path instruction and student engagement? Some of these questions were a follow-through from our last program review. So taking a look at best practice, just so you know, since our last program review, we've actually been part of what is considered best practice. We are finalists and an example of our programs throughout the state. We were visited and from the state, we had people come in and they took a look at our program, and we actually were one of the finalists to state programs. So when it comes to best practice, we are actually what some schools are looking at for where they want their districts to go. And again, this is a team effort that got us to this place. So as far as best practice is concerned, we are striving to demonstrate, for students to demonstrate, physical competence and cognitive understanding of all the health concepts. And this is K through 12. As you and the teachers in the room know, K through 6 is a version of how things work, and then 7 through 12 is the continuation process. We're really trying to link K through 12, so it's just one continuous progress where we're sequential all the way through. We are also trying to give students every opportunity to develop positive attitudes about physical activity and healthy behaviors. We want to provide students with meaningful and appropriate time to practice, which is extremely key for us. We're a performance-based program, so practice, 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 the more time students have on hands-on, obviously the gains that they will make. It's also important that students have spent time in moderate to vigorous physical activity 50% of the time via the different activities that we do in class, whether it's small-sided games, modified games, circuits, equipment, for everyone to participate. So those are some of the things that we're striving to for best practice. Regular, ongoing assessment based on the standards is also key to best practice, so we're to ever cycle and to improve our assessments as we move forward. Regular, ongoing assessment based on the standards, health and phys ed, K through 12, and then data is key, fitness assessment data helps us create our goals. Since our last program review, we've implemented Fitness Gram, which is a data program which will follow students grades 4 through 12, where they have their own online login account, where they can follow their progress with their fitness right from fourth grade right through 12. So they can see their strengths and weaknesses, set goals for themselves, so we can improve. Overall, as a district, we've had, we've grown every year in one of the key categories, which is aerobic capacity, which is for most folks, the most difficult to attain, and we've grown every year since we started the program. And then we also, best practice is class size, which is a real concern at the elementary level. The best practice that class size should match what is in the classroom. So that's K through 6, those phys ed classes should match what's within the regular classroom class size. So after taking a look and examining each portion of this, we took a look at what are our recommendations and needs. Some of them are continuations, just to continue what we're doing. So as far as the program and courses, Project Adventure is a big portion of what we like to do, which is just not a unit in time, it's throughout the school year, where it's problem-solving, collaborative, communicative, all types of activities as such. To continue with Fitness Gram, it is really key to maintain our data to see if we're growing. And many of, you may not know, but the science department and health and phys ed department in the high school are conjoined in a program through RUPRERS, where we offer RUPRERS programs for students to attain college credit through RUPRERS, through our Academy of Health Professions. And those courses are taught from both health education teachers and science teachers. And the students have gained numerous credits, and our program has grown since we've started this program. So for the continuation of that would be most beneficial to the students. One area that we think we need to work on is grade 6 as far as health concerns, it's a very touchy age, where it's middle school, yet it's not middle school, and material for that age group is also very sensitive, and to give all those that are instructing that as many resources as possible to help students master those standards. As far as curriculum assessment, we'll be in the process of revising our health and physical education curriculum under the lens of the standards, as well as taking a look at national standards to see if we can grow even further. Scope and sequence is of course extremely important, revise our assessments, and again, once again, identify health materials for grade 6. And then for K to 5, as many resources as possible. For K to 5, teachers do have an online curriculum based where they will have the assessments embedded. I have explored in a program called Health Smart, where you would just be able to log in as a teacher, and everything is at your fingertips for as far as all the standards and themes that you would like to carry on throughout the school year. Our world in physical education really revolves on our facilities, and so we took a strong look at our facilities, and we could use some updating and obtaining of those facilities. Also, our materials have lifetime, they expire, so we need to replace things and also maintain what we have acquired over the last few years. Project Adventure just doesn't end, it's a continuation of growth, so we're ready for the next level for what we can do with our students, continue with the Fitness Gram software, and of course, through PD for our teachers, it's extremely important so they stay up to speed with the latest strategies and programming skills that are necessary to be the best that we can be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next presentation we have on the agenda tonight is the performance report. We're going to hear from Mr. Bayne again, from Mrs. Locan Solo again, this time though, a different perspective on our curriculum instruction and assessment, with the focus on assessment and the focus on the program reports that come from our state testing. So Kent or Janine, which one do you have first? So Mr. Bayne is up first.
As Ian gets our presentation up, I just want to thank Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Powell again for a great job all year. Okay, as Dr. Blazer mentioned, the performance reports come to us every spring, sometimes late winter. They were delayed a little bit by the state coming out due to a different computer system they're using, and they came out just prior to the last board meeting, which gave us time to release them appropriately, so we waited until now, so they're a little late based on our schedule. But the reports here are based on the data that was presented in October, as well as the same data that's used in our QSET process. So the data is familiar to the teachers and to people in the room, we've been talking about it for a little bit. The way it's presented to the public changes with two different types of reports the state uses. The first thing we want to do is make sure you can hear me, can you hear me? The second thing is show you where these things are located on our district website. If you would like, we've aggregated and pulled the data that pertains to not labeled district and school reports and placed in our curriculum instruction website. If you're familiar with our website, you can go to District Offices Curriculum Instruction, and we've updated that. For some reason, last year's curriculums are, my mistake today, the office office will back and fix that tomorrow. But you'll see right there, the 1718 New Jersey DOE Performance Report presentation, that's his presentation, as well as the October presentation underneath that, you'll see information following. If you scroll down a little further, you'll see each school pulled out, as well as our district report. So you can jump right to these quick links if you'd like. Reports are also available in Spanish. We did not pull those, but you can find those on the DOE website. So the state releases information, and the goal of this information is to give all stakeholders some insight to how the district is doing. It's one measure of accountability the state has for districts around the state. Now, there's QSET, and there is the park results that come out, there's three really measures they use. But this one has a lot of information in two separate reports. One of the reports is a summary report, and that is a quick glance, a one-pager, that gives you, call them the speed dials of progress, that allow you to look real quickly to see how the district or the school is doing. And the other is a detailed report. The detailed report is pages, 50 or so odd pages, of information that breaks down the numbers, compares them to state trends, and different things of that nature. For the educators, remember, the detailed report will provide a lot of information to specific grade bands, ELA in math, as well as demographic information, that type of thing. It should be noted that while much of these reports in performance are in ELA and math, also they're there to share in the data that's presented here, the whole district shares this data. So what we would like to do today is provide you with an overview of what the documents look like, so you can navigate them on your own, and point out some notices at the end, things that we noticed going through these documents, and just talk about some of the data. But again, this data is based on the October presentation, one that we presented earlier. So the first part of the, I'm going to talk about the summary reports, and I've broken into three slides for you. The top, the middle, and the bottom of the summary report page. When you look at the top of the summary report page, you'll see information about either the school or the district. We are using the district reports, so it's one report really from the entire district, PK through 12. So you'll see information about how many students are in that school or a district, you'll see the percentage of economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, the English-language learners, you'll see that percentage, you'll see a great span for the building or for our district, the student-teacher ratio, as well as the average teacher experience. You'll see Dr. Blazer's name on the top for the district, you'll see the principals for each building going through that. So you'll see this, just provide a lot of information, this is over a lot of students, the whole district. If you look at the middle part of the student performance summary, you will see these speed dials and a graph that shows you absenteeism. The speed dials represent raw scores of how many students in the district scored a 4 or 5 on the part, now it's called the Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which we just started in the district last week for next year. You'll see that over 68% English-language arts students grades 4, actually, this would be grades 3 through 8, ELA, as well as 9, 10, 11, 3, 8, math, as well as algebra 1, algebra 2, and geometry, scored in that range, a lot of students. You'll also see the district's absenteeism rate. Chronic absenteeism is defined by the state as any student missing more than 10% of the school year are roughly 18 days, right? So that's how many students that missed more than, roughly about 18 days in the district, which is just a little bit higher than the district average. The good news is, if you look through our school reports last year, many of our schools were above the state average. We've come down, and I'd just like to shout out to the high school, who's done a great job for their everyday council routine, brought absenteeism below the state average for that building for last year, so that's a great job. They did in other schools as well. So you'll see this for every school, this is for the district. The next piece of information you'll see is the growth number. The growth number is a little different, it's based on teacher MSGP scores. The MSGP is a number the state generates, it pretty much takes students from a similar starting point and how much they've grown in a teacher's class versus other students of similar nature from around the state. And it puts that in a score from 1, from 0 to 100, and it raises that. And this is really interesting, because this measures how much students are growing from year to year. So the previous slide was just metrics, how they're performing, this is how is our district, how are students growing from year to year. If you look through these, in many of the schools, we are exceeding expectations, we have high growth rates in both math and ELA, and I think that speaks to a lot of our students, it definitely speaks to our teachers and the work they're doing in these grades, and it speaks to our programs and our program review process that are bringing these programs to support all three. So we'd like to thank everybody in the room for things of this edition. I think that's it for me. I'm going to turn over to Janine, and she's going to speak briefly about the detailed reports.
Okay, so this next section is going to focus more on the detailed reports. If you actually go, as Kent showed you on the district website, on I'm taking just a snapshot of a piece of each tab that you'll see at the top of the report, but you can actually scroll through and there's multiple pages and really a lot of information that I think you'll find helpful. So this first page here basically just talks about how you can navigate the reports. It also goes over some links that have links to the summary report, reference guide, frequently asked questions and that sort of thing. You'll notice at the top of the report, there are tabs. There's an overview and resources, which is what we're on now. And then there's demographics, student growth, academic achievement, college and career readiness, graduation, climate and environment, staff accountability, all tabs that we'll go through together. So this first tab is focusing on demographic data and this is enrollment information. You'll see that you can look for enrollment by grade level. You can also look through school student group for male, female, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities. You'll also see at the bottom left, enrollment data on kindergarten. You'll notice that we do not have a half-day kindergarten, so that's been zeroed out for you as well. There's also a section on the bottom right that talks about enrollment by home language, which is interesting. You'll notice that we have about six percent speaking Spanish at home and almost nine percent speaking another language at home, which is interesting. The next tab focuses on student growth. Again, just to kind of piggyback on what Kent had already presented, this is based on teachers' MSGP scores. And just to review the levels with you, you have low growth, less than thirty-five, typical growth between thirty-five and sixty-five, and then high growth above the sixty-five there. You'll notice underneath where it actually outlines the student growth, you have district data, so you have district-wide, and then you have student group data. So that's where you'll see things like white, Hispanic, black, African-American, and so on. You'll notice that we did have one area there, the black and African-American for ELA, where we did not meet, and that's something that we're focusing on as well. The others are all meeting or exceeding expectations. This next slide focuses on academic achievement. I know it's very, very difficult to read, but you can see here that we met the targets all the way at the rate there as well. For academic achievement in ELA specifically, it also gives a breakdown of the past three years' performance data. So you can see students who are meeting or exceeding grade level standards in ELA specifically throughout the years. This is particularly interesting because this is the first year of our newly revised ELA curriculum. And so it's always interesting for us to see the results of a draft year curriculum and how it kind of, how it speaks to student achievement at the end of the year. Just to give you an idea too, we have presented this data already, as Kent mentioned. And also the MJDOE and PAR provides us with evidence statement data, which is actually drilled down a lot more specifically than these numbers. So this is kind of a guide that we can use, that if we notice that a specific grade level or content area needs more focus, we can work with the teachers and the administrative team to go to those evidence statement guides and drill down and see specific standards. So again, this is really a wide lens that we're using with these reports. Similarly, we have the same reports for math that we did for ELA. You can see we are meeting targets here as well. And then we have the grade level meeting and exceeding standards on the PAR as well. Specifically here, if you look at Algebra one, I know that was a celebration that we had. Kent, if you want to speak to the growth there.
Just want to jump in, if you look at the three-year trend in Algebra one, this was an area of focus leading last year. And we've done a couple of things in the district. More from a programmatic standpoint, we introduced last year a strategies program that was made possible due to our schedule across the street, where teachers could find those adverse students, give them extra preparation going into the PAR testing. Another thing that's not represented, even though this data, if you look at the third year jumpstart, it is fifty-three percent behind. But you'll also see that, you won't see, that we developed a program this year to take the students that were not successful last year or mediate them in the fall, late fall, and test again in December. And I'm happy to say that a third of those students were able to score four or five on the PAR assessment after that to meet grade level expectations. And that data is not represented in the state data, so we're happy about that as well in the district.
Next, just moving across the tabs, we have college and career readiness. If you see here, you can see participation and performance on assessments like the PSAT, the SAT, and the ACT. If you look under climate and environment here, you'll also see chronic absenteeism shows up as an area of focus with sixteen percent of our students having over fifteen absences. Again, that's something that we're trying to address throughout the district, but it is something that we acknowledge as an area of focus that we continue to work on. The next tab is for the staff. This goes over on the specific number of teachers in the district. So we have three hundred thirty-six teachers. The average years of experience in public education, ten, as opposed to the state, which is twelve. The average years of experience in the district, we're at about nine point nine or ten, which is closely aligned with the ten point seven for the state as well. Total number of administrators next to it, twenty-seven. And then you have the total administrators in the state, the number of years in public schools for our administrators and their level of experience. Similarly, they also break down teacher and administrators' level of education. So you can see here that about half of our teachers have master's degrees and about ninety percent of our administrators. One percent of our teachers have doctoral degrees and eleven percent of our administrators do it as well. The next tab is accountability and this really focuses on S.O. grant requirements. So you can see here, based on these indicators, we do still have some areas within S.O. that we're working on as target areas as well. And again, this is kind of a wide lens view, but there are specific data points there that we're continuing to focus on. This last tab is kind of fun, it's the narrative tab and it lets districts kind of provide and show off a little bit about things that they're doing that are in particular note. So for us, we have our mission highlighted here. For awards and recognition, we have things like that we have a National Board Certified Teacher or a State Teacher of the Year. We also highlighted here some of our arts and music reward winning program. Course marketing curriculum, you'll see we kind of go through the district's integrated preschool and autism program. We also highlight something that Ms. Powell mentioned, the high schools on dual enrollment program with Rutgers and Spink Hall University. For sports, it outlines the district hosts more than twenty-five intrascholastic athletic teams and they're consistently recognized by the county and on the state levels. For clubs here, we also just speak to the variety of different clubs before school, at lunch, that we're very proud to be able to offer for our students as well. Before and after school programming, we highlight here some of the extended day offerings that we've been able to offer, things like treks, which just have their marketplace on Friday, as well as yoga and taekwondo and chess. There's also a tab here for professional learning and we use this section to highlight something that we're very proud of, which is our LPDC and skip teams. As all the teachers in the room know, we have building skip teams that are made up of teacher leaders who help drive the building rules. And we meet with those skip team members regularly as a district in a local professional development committee. And actually, the DOE no longer requires that that committee even exists nonetheless. And we still do it because we find a lot of value in meeting with those teacher leaders and helping to have some input into the goal setting for professional learning. Student support services, here we just outline our five oh four or child study team process. We also talk through our health and wellness objectives. As most of you know, with the new strategic plan, one of our district goals is health and wellness. So this was the time that we were able to highlight that as a focus area as well. And current community communication at the bottom, stakeholder communication to further enhance the use of things like school messenger and realtime our student power report. Facilities, the district continues to support the facilities projects and the school safety, that we have completed a comprehensive safety and security assessment in each school building. So again, I know the detailed report has a lot of information and I'm really only showing you a screenshot of the first slide of each section. So I encourage you to look at the detailed reports specifically for your school or for the district as a whole, because there's really some valuable information. And it's going to speak a little bit to some links also that could give you more information.
Just to wrap this up, we went through the district summary report and detailed report. Each school has its own, it's on our website or you can pull it from the DOJ, DOJ search engine. Here are some helpful links, these are also on our website. And you can find, if you want to go to our presentation, you can click on any of these and get information. And just some of the things that we noticed. The high school math report does not include students that scored four or five in December twenty eighteen. Please keep that in mind as looking at, that does need improvement and we are focused in providing that, as well as many other districts across the state. But I know we have a plan and we're working to make sure students are on grade level as they move through math. Our chronic absences have improved below state averages in our high school. That's a great effort, teachers, administrators of the high school, the parents, as well as the students on getting to school. It's very valuable, so we appreciate that. We also know that two other schools, we have some work to do in chronic absenteeism in elementary school and our middle school. And we are working to find out what work the high school will bring that down. We are excelling in growth in, as measured by MSGP, five out of six schools. And the high school doesn't have a growth calculation, so we can only get rated at six schools. And five of them, we have excellent growth. And in two of our elementary schools, we're excelling in both, math and ELA, which is, which is great work. So a great job to everybody in the room. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much Kent, Janine, for going into so much detail and helping people understand what those reports are. Everybody gets them, not everybody knows what they're missing, so thank you. Our next presentation is one that we've postponed a couple of times already this season. And I'm glad that tonight we're finally getting Dr. Ross Haber to address the community. Dr. Haber is the demographer that was first hired, I think, in two thousand twelve, I think, to do a demographic study of NOD. And what that means is a cohort look at our enrollment by school, our available facility space, and long-term planning and trends. He's going to talk about that a little bit tonight as part of his report. Since the original report in two thousand twelve, he updated that again in two thousand sixteen. This is the third look at this data. We need to keep looking at the data because frankly, we don't have any more space than we did then. The report in two thousand twelve told us that we were at capacity. We continue to work with the New Jersey Department of Education to meet, as you heard tonight, best practices, standards, class size models, and delivery of instruction. And I will say that for every teacher in the room, for every student that's going through the program, you have continued to rise. You do more with less. Our students are in larger class sizes, fewer resources. And yet, as you just saw from the performance reports, our trajectory remains positive and our progress remains forward, so. One of the things that we talk about with our buildings and our demographic report is enrollment. And over the past couple of years, I know you've heard me talk probably fifty, sixty times about them. Dr. Haber's take's slightly different. And he's going tonight in this presentation, talk about why we're pretty much in the same boat that we've been in and give us that overview for two thousand nineteen and looking forward for our future. So Dr. Haber, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. I'm really pleased that this audience is full of teachers because I think that some of the things I'm going to say tonight are going to resonate with you in terms of what goes on in the school district. And I'm going to do two presentations. The first one is to give context to my demographic report. So the first one I'm calling, you're not here to do it for the Halloween, trust me, although some of you may think it is. I call it the incredible strength in school, okay? And that's brought to you by state and federal mandates. And I put on the bottom, it's how changes in education, educational and special educational requirements have changed the school capacities. I call it, you know, a definition of a mandate by the government, if you do it, we won't fund it. And this incredible strength in school comes from, over many years, I've had the same, I've had this question. When we went to school, that school was built for a thousand kids. We had a thousand kids, now you got five hundred and eight got a room. And so this will kind of give you a little context of that, so. So the first slide we're looking at, this is not, by the way, this is not a NOD school, it's a generic school. So this is a school building that was built in nineteen sixty-five with a capacity of seven hundred fifty. There were a total of thirty classrooms in that building at the time. And there was a dedicated art room and a dedicated music room. And with the, with the remaining classrooms, there was an average of twenty-seven students per class. So then we move up to nineteen seventy-five. In nineteen seventy-five, elementary school still had a capacity of seven hundred fifty, still had thirty classrooms. There was minus a dedicated art room, dedicated music room, one self-contained special education room, and one resource room. So now we're down to twenty-six available classrooms in that building with an average class size of twenty-nine students per class. We move up to nineteen eighty-five, same building, no change, thirty classrooms, same capacity. That's functional capacity. And we have a dedicated art room, a dedicated music room, a room for self-contained special education, one resource room, and one computer lab. Now we have twenty-five classrooms available for general ed, an average class size of thirty. And now of course, the district started doing things like art on a cart, music on a cart, things like that to recover space. Finally, I'm not going to take it through year by year. In two thousand nineteen, that same building, and if you look at those orange boxes, that's seven full-sized classrooms that are no longer available for general education because if we wanted dedicated art room, dedicated music room, self-contained special ed, a resource room, now we have ESL, OTPT, speech, world language, and now our average class size jumps up to thirty-six with no change. So the point being, the point of this exercise is to show the community why schools have shrunk in size, have lost classroom space. It's the addition of programs, well-known programs. We need to serve special ed kids. We need to provide for kids with physical and emotional and mental disabilities. We need to keep kids in our programs, we need kids in music programs. Technology and science and Spanish, so these things are really necessary, but how do we cope with them with a growing population? So the next part of my presentation really does deal with that. And as Dr., my first study was actually in two thousand fourteen, this is the third one. In two thousand fourteen, I projected four thousand one hundred forty-three students for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, five year projection. The actual enrollment was twenty-two oh two, so it was a little bit higher, but that was a gain of about one point four percent over four year period. In two thousand sixteen, we projected four thousand one hundred thirty-four students for two thousand eighteen nineteen. So we were, the projections were pretty much on the money. Now, in both of these years, in the two previous studies, one of the projects that I had was to do, was to look at attendance zones for each of the schools. And in both years, we did attempt to analyze attendance zones in order to determine if anything we're redistricting could provide additional classroom space in any school. In both those reports, two thousand fourteen and sixteen, we could not find, we did not see redistricting as a solution. The buildings at that point were full, so you couldn't move from a full building to a full building. They were all unbalanced schools, so redistricting was not a solution. The current study indicates, the one that I presented this evening, that the NOD schools are going to continue to grow and redistricting is still not a solution to solve space issues. So moving batteries, shifting, shifting batteries around won't work. The enrollment in the district is projected to grow from the current forty-two oh two to forty-three fifty-one by the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-three twenty-four school year. This doesn't include, by the way, any potential new housing developments such as a fifty-five unit co-development, which might include, which might include twenty, a fifty-five unit development, which may include twenty units only in the strength line area, co-teams. I know that we want to talk about the other developments that may come in. I don't have the I don't have them. There's nothing official. There's nothing that's been on the books, so there's no way to project. We don't even know what some of these developments are going to look like. But if they do come in, and if they are residential, they can have further impact. The special education program in Nuthy's role, and that's probably a credit to a special education program that has a very good reputation, so kind of a little bit of a victim of their own success. This requires, in many cases, special education, special education classes do require with restricted enrollments, full-sized classrooms. That's the mandate. That's the law, and that needs to be complied with. That is fair. Many classes are at or approaching district class size guidelines. Some are above district class size guidelines. I'll get into that. And in the past, in the past two reports, what we did recommend was a pre-K five, six A elementary middle school, and nine twelve high school. We know that the referendum that went out to the public wasn't the thing, but it's something I think the district really needs to strive for, because simply stated, there's no additional space for student enrollment growth in the Nuthy schools. It's simple. It's true. It's real. Okay? Now, what are some of the key issues that we want to look at? First of all, increasing numbers of students requiring special services. A concern, I've been in the building, and many of the teachers here, special and special programs, know that they have divided, divided classrooms. Sometimes divided into two spaces, sometimes divided into four spaces to accommodate students with different needs in the same space, and it's, it's not, it's not easy, especially for some students who have special needs. It can be very distracting, as well as for the teachers. There's continued use of undersized classrooms. No one's in the classroom, but there are programs that are rooms that really aren't designed to accommodate ready, accommodate groups of students. Put it that way. As I said before, we have general education classes approaching or exceeding district class size guidelines. There's increasing number, another issue, I'll get to that in a couple of slides down, increasing numbers of students who have to attend schools outside of their home attendance zones. And it's not only kids who are attending special education programs because of overcrowding. Some of the schools, there are students, general ed students, who are going to schools outside of their home zone. New students coming in, that kind of thing. There's increasing need for TCU's, portable classrooms, temporary classroom units, and there's a decrease in amount of space. Matter of fact, I think we totally add space for additional, additional TCU's. So we, so redistricting and temporary classrooms are a solution. This is pretty, you know, I have to tell you something. I'm so impressed with what I've heard before, given what I'm presenting right now. This, the possibility of new residential developments which can impact the elementary schools, which are out above capacity, are projected to remain at those levels. So basically, what you're, a full house, you're going to continue to grow, and you've got to find a place with some way of accommodating these students. And right now, the only way is increasing class sizes. Not good one. For those of you who've not heard my presentation before, my background, I'm a demographer, but in my previous life, I was a school principal, so I kind of understand where you guys are coming from with all this stuff. These are your current elementary attendance zones for the five elementary schools. Okay? Now, the, the attendance zones, the elementary school attendance, I'm sorry, attendance zones by, by school. So these, these dots, those are actually students living in locations. So when we try to do redistricting, I have, we have the students matched on the map, and we have to take pieces of it, try and move them around, and no matter how much we did this, we couldn't find a way to balance the schools and create space. Okay? Now, student, now this, I addressed this before. Okay? These are students attending, students, uh, school, students attending schools outside of their home school attendance zone. And some of these are special ed, a lot of them are. So for Lincoln School, the total number, the total number of the students, K five, K six students who live in the Lincoln attendance zone is 405. That's the number of students who live in that zone. Of those, the total enrollment in, in Lincoln elementary school is 496. That means that, that, and result, of those 406, 378 live inside the zone. Thirty leave the zone to go to another school, and 118 come in. And I definitely believe those have a large special ed population, so that explains that, but it's not 100% of those students. So let me just, it can be a little confusing. If 405 K six kids actually live in that zone, okay, if you go back in that zone, the total enrollment is 496, meaning that's the actual number of kids in school. Of those, 378 of those K six students who live in the zone, thirty leave, 118 come in. And in the Radcliffe Zone, three, a total of 333 students is who live in that zone. 353 is the total number of students in, in, in the school. 297 actually live in the Radcliffe Zone. Thirty-six go to another school. At the youth zone, 56 come in. Spring Garden, and again, again, so that's, you can follow this, but basically what this is saying is that 200, there's a movement of 250 children in and out of their home attendance zone. And a very large percentage of those students are not, are not special education students. They're general education students done really to accommodate loads in the school, to keep the class sizes even, whereas you've got a grade level that may have to split a grade and can't, they have a section. Child has to be registered to another school building. So again, that's difficult. What this is, and this is just, this is just kind of a guideline for when I was doing this, this is a grid map. And it really shows each neighborhood, where the densities of population are. You know, for example, do I have a grid map? You know, for example, and again, it's hard to see on the map. I probably shouldn't use red, but the densest population in the school district is in this area. Okay? A little less dense as we get over here. It's very, it's dense over here. And, and if you go back to the last slide, where I showed the students who reside in the zone, that have to go to another school, it's because of the density of the different, of the different neighborhoods and different areas. Now, one of the questions, one of the things that we look at when we're doing a long projection, oh, what are the consequences of new housing in the district? So when this slide goes back and looks at new construction with different kinds of units over the last, over the last, since 2015, there's not been, not been a great deal of new construction in Nuthy, so a lot of the population is being generated by housing resales. So this turnover of housing, that's continuing. The population, the median age is, is increasing in this district, so it's happened. These old folks have started to move out. Young people, younger families are moving in. And that's why we're seeing, not declining enrollment, but rather an increase. Now, what this chart does, summarizes, it summarizes the changes between, the base year, the enrollment study, the enrollment projection study I did is called cohort survival projection, and it's based upon a six-year history of enrollment in the district. And so what you're looking at are changes by school over the past, since 2013 to the current year to project. So for example, district-wide, the district grew by about 132 students between 2013, 14, and 2018, 19. That's a growth of 132 students or an increase of about 3.24%. I'm projecting out to 4351 to 2023, 24, which is an additional 150 students, and that's a change of 3.57%. And that does not include any new, any potential new housing, not resales, but new housing. Lincoln is, Lincoln is, is showing, is leveled, has been leveled. Now, it's important when it's a level, that you understand that this district may have, you may see some leveling here, some, some stationary growth, but the problem is, it's a high. Okay? You're at capacity. So it's not like, hey, we don't grow anymore, it's not going to get bad. It's bad. Radcliffe is showing a slight, a slight growth of about 3.92. It grew level, it grew over 11% over the previous six years. Spring Garden, a smaller decline, projected to remain, again, leveled, leveled at capacity. Washington Elementary School, again, is, is leveled, it's leveled at very high capacity. Yannacor, that's looking at about a 7.24% growth, and it is, it's, it's at capacity, over capacity right now. Walker, this school is going to see about a 21% increase as the lower grades go through in the, in the two grades they carry. The high school, about a 2% growth rate. There's continuing growth in self-contained, continuing growth in pre-K. So on average, it looks like the district is going to grow by about 3.57% over the next, over the next five years, and that's again, that need of housing construction. Right, this table, don't bother to strain your eyes, this is a cohort projection table. This is what the baseline projections are made at. And what, what we do with, how we achieve those, is we take, we take growth as kids move through grades. So for example, there were 289 kindergarten students in 2013, 14. When they became first graders, when this cohort became first graders, they were pretty leveled. When they became second graders, they grew by about 7%, and so forth. And what we do is we average that, we average that down for a four, six-year period, and then use these multipliers to get the projected numbers as they go down. Kindergarten is based upon birth five years prior to kids entering kindergarten. And so that's, so the average birth to kindergarten is used to project kindergarten numbers. And as you can see, District C, rather, the district-wide projection is an overturn. Okay? The next, okay, the next thing that, that was done is in the study, is after the projections were completed by school, what it then did was take a look at the capacities of each building, the total numbers of classrooms, to come up with an analysis of what the classrooms will look like. Now, this table shows that 2018, 19, okay, those are, those are some of the classrooms that are above capacity. There are some grade five and grade six classes that have hit 30. The district guideline is the next column, which shows what the district would like to have. So you see in grade, in grade, let's see, in grades, actually, all the grades almost, they're, that you're, you're above district guidelines. And best practice by the state are those numbers. So your over, so your over-classroom size, average class size is both on, in the real world, the district guideline and the best practices guideline. And so what the next group of charts show is the actual projections for each of the school buildings, where the school's going to be, projections on the number of special ed kids, if they're PK kids, and these tables, and, now, this is online. So this is online, so if you want to scrutinize it a little bit more, this actually looks at what the projections look like with each of the schools over the next, over the next five years. And if you go at the end, you see what the average class size would be, and these are, oops, sorry. And each, in each of the charts, sorry, okay, in each of the charts, what it's shown is what full-size classrooms are used in that building other than for general education. And then the other chart are the rooms that are used for special education. And you can see by that, there are rooms that are shared, there are FSBs full-sized. So for example, room 109 is a full-size classroom for resource for the chair. Okay? Room 209 is a full-size classroom for LLD. Room B2 is a small classroom, that chair, that could be a divided classroom. And I've done this for each of the school buildings. So you get a feel for what programs will be in each building, what exists over the next five years, and you can go, and I've done this for each of the buildings. Okay? Determine where, where, where space can be available, where it's not available, where, where the programs are located, and if they're located in a full-size room, or if they're located in a small room. And I won't go through each building, but that's where you review, review the charts. That's what it says. And finally, this is Yannacor. And so, so my conclusions and recommendations. It's clear that the district is currently operating out above capacity in each of the elementary schools. With limitations on the number of TCU's which can be added, it is clear that this will need to increase size, class size in the near future. The district has limited options at this point in terms of creating and refining classroom space. So the following recommendations. One, very important, okay, to monitor progress of new housing developments. Adjust projections in order to determine the impact of these developments on the elementary schools. So for example, if a developer comes in on, on the LaRoche properties, and it's going to be a large number of residential units, we have to look at that once we know what they are to determine what that impact is going to be. When possible, reconsider the option of creating a middle school at Walker, to create five K five school buildings. And I know that would mean a referendum, that's probably a really painful thing about, but I mean, it's something that the district really needs to work towards. Find, and the other possibility, find alternate spaces in Nuthy's which the district might rent, lease, or purchase space. Each lead requires renovation space, non-educational structure buildings that meets the educational requirements. But if there is space that can be used for construction, even with some conversions, probably not a bad idea to take a look into it. And that concludes my presentation for the evening.
Okay, I just wanted to thank the presenters again this evening for a wonderful job. You know, the things that we're doing in the district are amazing. Our staff, everyone that's here tonight, it's a huge thank you to everything that We really, really, truly appreciate it. So I'm going to continue with the presidential report. The Nuthy Board of Education, again, looks to welcome everyone in tonight's attendance. This will be a quick update, recap of our invitations to the zoning and planning board meetings, and additional information on negotiations. And then I'll have our attorney, Mark Zerbe, speak on policy and procedures pertaining to personnel. Over the last three years, the Board of Education has participated in the annual planning and zoning meeting. This is their annual, their one-time-a-year where both boards come together to talk about their, their applications that went through the year. And we've been invited for the past three years. This year, the meeting took place at Parks and Recreation on Fourth Street, 2019. And at that meeting, we shared the enrollment data for the district. And again, this is the third year we've been providing this information as they continue collegial, a collegial approach to working with commissioners, the Board of Education, planning its own work. Negotiations continue. We, we have not completed our, our process as of yet, but we are definitely working with the association, and, you know, we've had conversations, we've had conversations as, as recent as a couple of hours ago, to try to continue through our process of getting to a conclusion. I will tell you that we were, we're going to try to post something online, just having our representation take a look at, and was able to find something online that really talks about negotiations and some of the challenges that both sides face, who are coming to conclusion and how things can take a lot longer than we anticipate. I thought it was a good read. We're going to try to make it available on the website, and we'll put some communication out of the paper that we'll be at. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mark Zerbe, who will assist me on personnel matters, specifically on the role of the administration. Should an incident occur with an employee of the district, confidential status of these matters, and the power of the board to act when circumstances occur, that directly related to employees of the district. At this time, I wanted to start it over to Mark. Thank you.
Good evening. So by the law, New Jersey statute Title 18A, which I have sitting here in front of me, the superintendent of schools is responsible in a school district for all personnel actions that take place in a school, whether it be a promotion, a demotion, a reassignment, a transfer.
to employees of the district. At this time, I wanted to start it over to Mark. Thank you.
Good evening. So by the law, New Jersey statute Title 18A, which I have sitting here in front of me, the superintendent of schools is responsible in a school district for all personnel actions that take place in a school, whether it be a promotion, a demotion, a reassignment, a transfer. The board has absolutely no legal authority whatsoever to act on personnel matter without the recommendation of the superintendent. So when you look at our evening agenda, you see lots of personnel items, those tools here are always upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The board can't appoint somebody without that recommendation. The administration is also responsible for taking action and investigating any type of alleged student misconduct, alleged staff misconduct, again, outside the role and the purview of the Board of Education. The board, by the Code of Ethics, is really a policymaking body. If you look at the Code of Ethics, it says the responsibility of the board is for policymaking, planning for the future of the district, and appraisal, taking a step back and seeing how we're doing and where we need to improve. And lastly, it's important to remember that the Board of Education cannot legally comment in public regarding personnel actions unless the staff member receives a RICE notice, which is a notice that takes place prior to the meeting where the staff member is informed that the board may take, have a discussion, I should say, regarding terms and conditions of their employment, and the staff member then voluntarily compels the discussion into public. If the staff member does not compel the discussion into public, the board is without any legal authority to discuss and comment on personnel matters. Those discussions take place in closed session, or otherwise known as executive sessions, one of the exceptions to the public discussion portion of the Public Meetings Act. So if a board member violates any of the rules and laws that I just said, they could be subject to an Ethics Act complaint under the School Ethics Act, so they have to be very guided accordingly, and always follow the recommendation of the superintendent on personnel matters.
Thank you, Mr. Zerus. We're going to turn it over to our superintendent, or superintendent's report.
So I just, I just want to say thanks again to Mrs. Carly Johnson, Ms. Robin Powell, Mr. Ken Vania, Mrs. Janine Goltz-Solow, for taking so much time to prepare and share with the community our ongoing efforts in curriculum instruction and assessment. You're really telling the story of the district's successes. We don't get that opportunity very often, so thank you again, all of you, for taking the time to do that. The ongoing monitoring and evaluation of our curriculum and programs has truly contributed to the overall progress of the district, and as we've said, positive outcomes for our students at every level. Additionally, thank you, Dr. Haber, for joining us tonight and telling a different part of the Nuthley story. You've been working with us for, you know, the last six years, and your data, your insight, and your perspective has really allowed us to plan ahead, look forward, make decisions. Most of the people in the room tonight are directly affected by being in capacity, by all of your class sizes, by the decisions that we needed to make, and we appreciate the time that you take to come and report to us. Beyond all that, it's really an exciting time in that league. There are a lot of events that showcase the variety of strengths and talents in our community. We had mural unveiling that you heard about at the last meeting, been a number of tricky trade fundraisers, talent shows, scholarship dinners, lots of honors for those such as our rural language students and our scouts. There really is a tremendous amount to be proud of. I'm going to highlight just a few things that happened since our last meeting and a couple of upcoming weeks. So first of all, big congratulations to our very talented Nutley High School music students and our incredible music directors, Mr. Rick Relo, Mr. Gaines, Ms. Rothkopf, Mrs. Poyes, for getting all of those top awards in Music at the Park Festival competition at Bush Gardens in Williamsburg. I don't know if you are aware, or if you've seen any of the posts that are done on the district website, just in case you haven't, our concert choir was first place excellent, our choralets were first place excellent, the symphonic band was second place, still excellent, chamber orchestra, fifth place, still excellent, and overall, we won the Screen of Honor, which I think, you know, really talks about our Nutley program, not just in music, but in all of the planned performing and practical arts, and we thank you for representing Nutley so beautifully and so strongly. All right. Friday night, we had the Second Annual TRAPS Marketplace. In the second year of the event, we already outruined middle school, we had to go over to the Nutley High School cafeteria. I have to say, this is a phenomenal program and a huge undertaking by a lot of people. It is held as part of the extended day program, so again, excellent job. Kat and Janine, in partnership with the Nutley Educational Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a special thank you to one of our parents, Mesam Hindustan, who originally brought the program to me. In my very first couple of weeks in the district, she's been tireless in trying to realize this program for all of our fourth to eighth grade students in Nutley. And if you attended Friday night, you saw that it's been just a huge success. The creativity, the innovation of our students, what they were able to realize with our staff mentors, their entrepreneurial really came out, and honestly, we should all be really, really proud. So thank you to everybody involved in the TRAPS program. Wonderful job. Sunday is the Chamber of Commerce 5K, and a thank you to the Nutley Educational Foundation and the team at Nutley and Nutley Public Schools. Registration is already online now, or you can show up at eight o'clock Sunday morning prior to the nine AM start. If you don't think you're quite up to the five-day part, please join us. Feel free to walk with us, support the cause, everything helps, and we truly love when we can come together as a community and make a difference in the schools. So I hope you'll be able to join us for that. Please note also that our next quarter of education meeting is already coming up May 6th, it's a little sooner, I think, than usual, and I just want you to know that we'll be having our winter sports awards that night, and that's also the night of our public budget hearing. And finally, I'm almost afraid to say it out loud, because we don't talk about the no-hitter or the no-hitter, but unless an additional day is needed for an emergency or weather closing, I can't even think about it, schools will be closed on Friday, May 24th, in advance of the Memorial Day weekend. The closure allows our staff and students to meet the state contractual requirements for instructional days and staff incentives for this school year, 2018, 2019 school year. The district offices, however, are open on Friday, May 24th, and will be here if you need something from any of us. That's it, there's an end.
Thank you, Dr. Haber. We're going to turn it over to our board secretary, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Carisal. The Board of Education is doing their due diligence this year with respect to several of the professional appointments, and they have issued requests for proposals for both legal, architect, and athletic physician services. Those responses are due tomorrow, April 30, 2019. After we have done a preliminary review to be sure that all of the responses are compliant, the board president will establish an interview committees to then meet with the different responders and the board to make their determination as to appointments for the following school year. We are also, in the midst of a request for proposal for food service, as our contract with Chart Wells has expired, and those responses are due on May 14th. The interested partners will be doing a walkthrough with Mr. Melora, our Assistant Business Administrator, and then they will file their responses as well, and again, another interview committee will be established to select the next food service vendor. And as just a reminder, the 2019, 2020 public budget hearing will take place at our Board of Education meeting on May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. And we're going to send it over to our student representative, Mr. Allen.
Hey, everybody. So I'm just going to do some quick updates on what's been going on at high school. So the student council and key club really for life preparations are being made, so we're working on shared designs and marketing to the students right now. Also, we're working on NHS Games Day more and more as the date is approaching, it's going to be on June 21st, and that is an initiative that we started this year. As part of the events, we recently had the Academic Decathlon, where the juniors beat the freshmen, sophomores, and seniors sadly. The scheduling, we're scheduling a game right now between the juniors and the teachers for the high school, and given how many teachers are here right now, I think we know who's going to win that game. But in any case, seniors are in the lead right now. And also, we started another new event this year called the Day of Service, if you've heard of that, and we had our kids go out into the community to volunteer right before break. We had people who were painting murals in the high school, which we had, we'd go to the parks, a lot of people volunteered at the Nutley Family Service Bureau. So yeah, we had a big positive impact, and I'm very sure that we're going to have an even bigger turnout next year, as people here are providing more and more. And seniors, of course, had the biggest turnout this year also, so we scored more points for NHS Games Day. And yeah, that's about it for now. We're meeting for NHS Games Day, May 15th or before that, to finalize more details, but AP season is coming up, and finals are coming up, so things are slowing down.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, we're moving on to our meeting reports. First report of the evening is going to be academic with Mrs. Van Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on April 17th. Dr. Blazer reviewed the hockey co-op, we entered into an agreement with Columbia High School and South Orange Medical last year on a pay-to-play basis. This has been successful for both communities. While there is still about a year remaining on the agreement, the piece for 2019, 2020 will be revised to reflect current costs. Additionally, new field is required in the co-op, so one student will have the ability to play on a high school team. That student will also participate and be applied. Dr. Blazer reviewed the kindergarten registration to date. We are once again hosting at the seams, anticipating having to send students to other schools other than the middle school. So far, radical, school kindergarten is closed with waiting lists. Washington has six spots remaining with seven appointments scheduled. Hanco has 14 spots with six appointments scheduled. Re-registration for all current fourth and ninth graders will take place at the middle school, May 7th through 15th. Information was provided to the families and on the district website. Dr. Blazer reviewed the staff set for budget for the committee, and out of that committee that is comprised of the chairs, who will be in the BOE committees, it's immediately to continue discussions prior to the May 6th budget presentation. Dr. Blazer also shared two exciting new program partnerships with the Township's Hope Committee. The district will be organizing a day of peace to be held in October. We're looking forward to sharing exciting activities building up to that day. Additionally, the New Jersey Department of Education has selected Nutley to participate in the Sandy Hook Promise, through a series of trainings and programs for school staff and parents. We will combine programs related to mental health, wellness, with our ongoing safety and security activities. Mr. Van Jacob, Mrs. Goltz-Solow, reviewed your field shirts and professional development requests. The next meeting of the academic committee will be on Wednesday, May 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Jacob. We will go over finance now, Mr. Farrar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on April 23rd. The committee reviewed to mention our finance resolutions. Ms. James updated the board on the responses to our request for qualifications for legal, architect, athletic physician. Mr. Melora also reported on the RFP for our food service management company. Commissioner Tom Evans visited us and discussed the final agreement that was negotiated for a portion of the buildings on the on three properties. The committee reviewed the annual health insurance renewal, highlighting the district's claim history and the results of our district's marketing efforts, as well as our student accident policy, and we were in the process that is currently underway. Mr. Nidaleth provided an update on the preventative labor projects with respect to the pressures of our geothermal and air conditioning systems, as well as the overall work order. He also discussed the high school recruiting project and the insurance appeal that the district will be filing shortly. To date, we received from the insurance fund $250,000. The committee reviewed financial reports for 2017, 18, 2018, and 19, and the projected 2020 budgets. Our next meeting is on May 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Our final report for this evening is going to be, Ms. Zerus, the policy.
The policy committee met on April 17th, and attended with Lisa Tench, Jen Horton, and Carisal, and Ms. Zerus. We discussed, Commissioner Tom Evans joined us for the committee to discuss the township pilot programs and state funding. Dr. Blazer and Joe Fire reviewed other district policies, roundabout political conduct as related to Hazen. Address document was developed for our first reading, and a large number of policies and updates from our stress estimate were reviewed and updated, eight more here on tonight's agenda for first reading. The next meeting of the policy committee will be Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms. Zerus. We now come to a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board in this section. We allow questions or comments on the lead resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall have limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wish to speak on topic, have them heard. All statements will be directed to me, the chairperson, no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that your statements to lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant for participation may be terminated. Please remember to overspeak your name and address in the general, to address the board, and sign on this conclusion before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to convert on resolutions only, please step over. I do have a list in front of me that people did sign in earlier. I just want to make sure that anybody who wants to speak to a resolution that we're going to be moving in this portion of the meeting is not one of the reasons why someone on this list would like to come up. So I'm going to assume that that is no one, and we're going to hold off to the next portion.
I would like to speak.
Okay, do you want to speak to the resolutions that we're going to be approving, or do you want to speak on any other school-related matter? We're all going to be speaking towards the resolutions that we're going to be approving. And there's another public portion. Okay, so you've got, Ms. Van Jacob, will you take academic, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move on to the first resolution, one, two, three.
Discussion. Will call this conclusion.
Mrs. David, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Maye?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Presinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Sapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ron Sapp?
Yes. Mr. Presinsky, will you take academic, please?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to go to the first version, one and two.
Discussion. Will call this conclusion.
Mrs. David, Mr. Moore? Yes. Mr. Maye?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Presinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Sapp?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Farrar, will you take finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President, we would like to move on to resolutions.
Discussion.
Yes, I have the discussion. In regards to page six of the first, uh, schology, is that, is that form placed in regards to real time, instead of real time?
I'm sorry, Mr. Farrar, can you just give me some guidance on where you are, I apologize.
I'm referring to page six of, I'm sorry, can everybody hear me? I'm referring to page six of, of the date of bills and mandatory statements on the first check for schology. Not just one, right? Is that in place of real time, real time program that we have? No? Is that in addition to? Okay, so it's in place of performance matters unified, and brings together some of our other educational pieces. We reported on it in the academic committee back in February, it's what is going to facilitate change to the information, student information management system and vice versa. All right, thank you.
Mr. Presinsky, will you take, oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Will call this conclusion.
Mrs. David, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Maye?
Yes, so they're standing on the clock.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Presinsky?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Sapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ron Sapp?
Yes. Mr. Presinsky, will you take personnel?
Yes, sir, I'm, 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 personal, one, two, three.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion. Will call this conclusion.
Mrs. Dan Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Prisenski?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Sallow?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Aaron, would you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move on to policy, first one, as stated.
All right, second.
Discussion. Will call this conclusion.
Mrs. Dan Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mr. Corral?
Yes.
Mr. Prisenski?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Sallow?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allocates three minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant. Your participation may be terminated, including members to always state your name and address at each and every time you address the board, and sign on this conclusion before you take the microphone. Before we have, I do have a list in front of me, there's another sign sheet down there. We are going to allocate, at this point, an hour for this session. I do believe that with the list that we have here, we may not exceed a half hour that we have as part of our policy. But we will monitor the time, and hopefully we'll get to everyone here on the list. Okay, we also have John, John Moore is on the left there, he's got two cards in front of him. So I'm gonna ask to make sure that everyone gets their three minutes. We're gonna try to hold everyone two to three minutes, so I would ask that when you do see the yellow card, start to wrap up your portion of comment, and once your red card comes out, we're gonna ask you to please relax yourself. The next person is speaking. The yellow card will represent that you have 60 seconds left before your time, if your three minute time is not available. All right, so the first person, the first person that we have on the list is Mr. Microsofters.
Thank you all for participating, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to come up here and speak. To start with, I'm gonna take it back a little bit. In 2011, the district was having some financial difficulties. One of the ideas that was proposed at that time was to outsource paraprofessionals. It was explained by many that while possibly cost-effective, this was not consistent with proper educational practices. It was then that the EAN stepped up and voluntarily moved from the hardly favored traditional plan to a less expensive plan for the district. We literally saved the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. Two contracts ago, we asked for Chapter 78 relief and were denied. At the bargaining table, I asked if the district was going to balance their budget on the backs of the staff. Two of the people on the other side pointed at it with an amusement and said, yes. And the last negotiation, we again asked for Chapter 78 relief and were denied. The contribution of the staff had reached Tier Four at that point, and it became too much of a bonus for the district to give up. In order to avoid starting the 1819 school year without a contract, the association notified the district in October of 2017 that we were ready to start negotiating and requested meeting dates. In November, I asked for documentation we needed to formalize our proposals, and again, asked for meeting dates. Having not heard from the district, I asked again. Finally, receiving the information I requested on February 28th of 2018. Our first meeting date was May 15th, a full seven months after we notified the district that we were ready to negotiate, a delay for which we've never been given an explanation. We were very close to an agreement this past April 9th. An agreement, although not formalized, was reached on the guidance. Then the wheels of progress ground to a halt. By our estimates, we will have paid $1,932,222 in healthcare contributions this school year, and yet the district wants more. Chapter 78 is put in place to help districts with the ever-increasing cost of healthcare. But the money they are asking for now is not destined to relieve healthcare costs. They already made and continue to make their healthcare payments, they really don't need it. All district employees started paying more on July 1st, 2018, because the healthcare costs went up, regardless of whether or not they got salary increase. In fact, the salary increases the staff have received have not kept pace with their increasing healthcare contributions. Everyone who's contributed to their healthcare in this district has not seen a raise in salary since 2011. Now, because we are finally getting a salary increase, after being delayed through many months, they want part of that too. They want nothing additional to the insurance company. That's what the money was designed for. This is money they want, not money they need. We sacrificed in 2009 by giving up our tried and true traditional healthcare coverage. We sacrificed prior forced participation in the healthcare tax allowed by our state legislation. We've done more than our part in balancing the budget of the district. We sacrificed, and we need relief. It's time for the district to treat the employees with more than a place to come to fix their financial troubles. For nearly a year, we've been waiting for a salary increase, while the district has taken more healthcare contributions, and now we've come to find out, they want even more. We have sacrificed for this district. We have sacrificed enough. Thank you.
All right, next person on the list is Nicholas Duca. The next one on the list is Alexa McNulty.
Hi, my name is Alexa McNulty, and I'm a junior at Nellie High School. We have nothing but wonderful things to say about our working teachers here at Nellie, who go above and beyond for pretty much every student. Personally, I struggle with math. I have struggled with it since middle school and still struggle with it to this day. One teacher that's always been there to help me is Mr. Sorensen. I'm sure most people in this building already know how great of a teacher he is, but I have to say, he truly goes above and beyond for all the students. Mr. Sorensen provides help in the mornings before school, during his lunch period, and for any student who needs it. Sometimes, he doesn't even get a chance to eat his own lunch. He always puts his students first, and is one of the most patient and helpful teachers I've ever had. Because this contract has not been settled, our teachers are unfortunately pulling back and working only on their contract hours. Teachers are only permitted to work from 8:05 to 2:53, which is now their school day in Nellie. This is negatively impacting us students, because no teacher ever works their contract hours only. They come in early, work during lunch, stay late, and work during weekends to make us better students. In closing, I hope the board will settle if you truly care about your students.
Next person on the list is David Rotaga. Oh, sorry. I lose it, David, wrong, I'll say David, sorry, Dario Rotaga.
Good evening, my name is Davi Rotaga, I'm currently a junior in Nellie High School, and I'm a part of the class of 2020. Unfortunately, today I was informed by multiple teachers that they won't be writing our college letters of recommendation due to the ongoing battle for their contracts. I understand how the situation is extremely tiresome on the people involved, but it is no excuse to take out those frustrations on the students. I have the utmost respect for my teachers, and they deserve a promising contract. My only recourse is to attend this meeting tonight and voice the words of many students that are counting on the relationships that they have developed with their teachers. At this time in our lives, teachers are an important figure whom we look to for helping events. Right now, there's a sense of uneasiness between students and teachers, which is not how it should be. It's upsetting to see that the contract battle has gone so far as to potentially affect our future. Personally, I've always seen letters of recommendation as something special and something I've looked forward to, to ask my teachers for since I was a freshman. For this experience to be almost ruined by economic negotiations is very disappointing. I hope this situation is resolved soon, because many of us have priorities that must be met by a certain deadline. We would like to, I would like to finish off by saying that this should never escalate to the point of affecting the class of 2020. High school is supposed to be an even playing field, and right now I feel as if we're being cheated. Thank you.
The next one we have on the list is Aria James.
My name is Aria James, I'm a junior at Nellie High School, I'm a freshman. In Nellie High School, we've always talked about going to your teachers for help whenever we need it, and using your resources around you, and I feel like without this contract being in place and teachers pulling back, we aren't the, the things that we kept, that were being implemented in us for so, so the entire high school, our entire high school career has now just gone away. We, I go to my, my teacher, Mr. Sorensen. In the morning, I go to him during my study hall, I go to him during my lunch after school, and without that, I probably wouldn't have gone to Razor Avenue's class, or been as successful as I have been in my, now. When it comes to the letter of recommendations, though, that's something that is a necessity for college in every college application, and that's what you need. And if this agreement keeps getting dragged on, say, it goes on to September, it's even then, the teachers don't have the amount of time and to put in to their letters and the wording. It takes time. Some teachers are writing forty, fifty letters, and to rush all of them and not do every single letter here at all, and really work for them, that's affected us in the long, in the long run. And I personally, I, I would like to play about my future. This is something that's very serious to me, and I feel like with this affecting us as students, it should be serious to everybody in this room, and, yeah.
Next up is Addie Thurston.
Hi, I'm Addie Thurston, I'm a junior at Nellie High School. In regards to teachers' contracts, this has affected far too many people and gone on for far too long. I do regret not coming to other meetings, because my opinion on this issue hasn't changed. But now that some teachers will not write recommendation letters until contracts are negotiated, this issue has become critical. For the sake of teachers, who are very much underpaid, despite giving their all to our community and every student, contracts should have been negotiated long before this. But now that students are involved, it's becoming imperative to resolve this. Teachers care immensely for their students, and I'm sure this is the last thing they wanted to resort to. But it's unfortunately necessary in order to make their voices heard. Many students' goals of attending college hinge on these letters. And while I respect teachers and their decision to do this, this will make an already stressful time for us even more fraught. Teachers who work so incredibly hard for us need their contracts, and students need their letters. So it's about tying these contracts and negotiating before both teachers and students face even worse situations than they're already.
Okay, before we go to the next speaker, and I just wanna thank the students for coming up and expressing their concerns. I know the entire board, as well as other teachers and administrators, were receiving an email today from apparently voicing concerns specifically for the fact that they were told by teachers that recommendation letters could not be written. And it also goes on in the email to state that the purpose was to encourage the Board of Education to come to negotiation terms and settle the contract. Again, I just want you to know that that was something that, when it came to me, I put it towards the superintendent, as well as the EAN. I don't know if any of the membership wants to speak to it, vice president or president, they're more than welcome to come up and speak.
Do you have addressed the parent who sent the email? We have addressed privately, through that, everyone was copying on it.
Would you be able to tell the public what the position of the public, or what the position of the parent was, when he spoke to them?
I did speak to the parents, the parent, it was through an email. The parents sent an email to me, as well as twenty-two other people were copying on it. I responded to the parent that the Education Association of Nellie has never told a teacher they should not write a recommendation. It is not our position that teachers should not write recommendations. We feel that if a student comes to a teacher for a recommendation, that student should be given all consideration. We are not condoning this in any way. Don't laugh.
Okay, next on the list is Sandy Tackness.
Before I make this brief statement, I'm sure glad you made that statement about the teacher recommendations. As a gentleman that sat on that board for twelve years, twelve, I'm Freddie McCold. A gentleman that sat on that board for twelve years, I would be greatly disappointed to think that one of our students wouldn't get a letter, so. On here to the brief statement, I would like to speak on a matter related to the director of athletics, Cholka. The conversation, subsequent media coverage regarding the 2017 complaint filed against Mr. Pyro has been entirely one-sided. Further, the allegations which had been relayed by the student and her family were vehemently denied by Mr. Pyro in 2017. He continues to deny that to this day. The student and her family allegations were investigated by three separate agencies, the New Jersey Division of Child Protective Services, the Nellie Police, the Essex County Prosecutor's Office, besides the Board of Education. In all cases, he was exonerated for doing nothing wrong. As a civil lawsuit, Mr. Pyro was dismissed from the case prior to any settlement by the insurance company of the Board of Education. At the time of the settlement was consummated, Mr. Pyro was no longer a party to the civil action. Accordingly, Mr. Pyro did not authorize the settlement, that was made by the Board of Education. He was not party to the settlement. No monies were paid by, to the complainants, by him, around his behavior. And quite frankly, if he had been asked about the settlement prior to it being agreed to, he would have said and disagreed that it should be done, he would have actively opposed it. As a matter, as the matter has been reported to the media related to the lawsuit, the complainants and the Board of Education went down by a confidential agreement. When Mr. Pyro learned of the terms of the settlement between the complainants and the board, and the terms of the subject confidentiality, confidential agreement, Mr. Pyro did the honorable thing and voluntarily chose not to comment, even in the face of unfair, inaccurate media coverage, and even worse commentary on social media. The complainants had voluntarily chosen to violate the terms of the confidentiality by speaking publicly about the case. And Mr. Pyro has been advised by the counsel for the insurance company that the Board of Education has the right to bring legal action against the complainants for forfeiture of the settlement. I urge the Board of Education to sue the complainants for violation of the confidentiality agreement, forfeiture of the settlement. forfeiture of the settlement. The record in total has cleared Mr. Pyro of these allegations and dismisses him from any responsibility or liability. He is a committed, he's a committed educator, professional that has earned high praise from his peers and member of the educational team. Thank you.
Next is Salam Hashimi.
Hi, my name is Salam Hashimi. I'm right in seventh grade and I'm here to support teachers. Teachers, you guys have done so much for us and without you guys, we wouldn't get no more. Unfortunately, you guys don't get appreciated enough and deserve so much more. When listening to my teachers and what they have to say or teach, I realize how huge of an impact they have on me. Two teachers that have impacted me this year are both my tech teachers, Ms. McDonald and Ms. Milner. Ms. McDonald is always supportive of me and always is the best positivity that excites me to go to that class. And Ms. Milner, my second tech teacher, is also supportive of me and makes class fun with projects stuck in the way to our future. Because of them, I want to continue with tech in my future. Our teachers deserve so much more than what they get and it's time for my group to realize that.
Next up is Mr. Alex Rubens.
Hey, good evening. Some pretty tough acts to follow here. You did a good job. Um, I wanted first, you know, LA High School class of seventy-nine, uh, parent of a class of 2020 junior and other fellow alumni in the family as well. I watched the last board meeting related to the budget and the two percent cap sounds like it's very limiting where you're going to be left to make cuts. And seeing how some of the programs here are already thin, where would the four who voted to cut down to two percent make cuts in the budget, the operating budget?
So, Mr. Rubens, we, we can't address the board members individually, but I will answer what we've done since the last budget vote, which was the preliminary budget vote.
Okay.
Um, what we've done is we created a budget committee. Um, and they're actually, they're on their, their meeting now to go through the, the budget and to work towards a, uh, resolve of how we're going to manage the budget going into next week. Um, so they're going to be, if they find a meeting that delivers tomorrow, um, there'll be additional information provided to the rest of the board with what they've uncovered and how we're going to address them in the next meeting. Um, but it was done with all the chairs of the committees in an attempt to make sure that we are able to open our doors up, be able to, uh, do the things that we're doing and be able to continue our progress as a mission.
Okay, thanks. And if I can make a comment about one program in specific, about the STEM program? Having a STEM computer science degree myself, my youngest, uh, has gone on college visits and we can see the difference in what is required for kids going into a computer science program, not just in the banner institutions of the state like Stevens and NGIT, but like Seatt Hall and, uh, and what was it, uh, Rider and, and so on. They expect what was given to us when we came out of, you know, high school, uh, in freshman, uh, fundamental building, they expect the kids to come out of high school into college, walking out with those skills already. And those are skills that are cultivated in the STEM, uh, classes that we have here, the, the computer science, uh, the Cisco, uh, the, you know, programs and so on. Uh, and if that is something that unfortunately would be cut, you would be shooting this district in the foot and hurting the kids when the hottest academic program in all the colleges is, you know, looking for, you know, skills that they need to walk in. You're cutting them short.
We have, uh, Richard Wenhell. Okay, that concludes the people that are on the list. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard this evening?
Right, I'm trying to set before and maybe say that. Uh, first of all, I wasn't going to speak about the teacher, but, uh, doing more with less, that, that's what all it is, every profession, and it's a shame. Uh, I think it's tragic that we can't come to terms with them. Uh, myself, three years without a contract in the public sector, and I think it's, uh, it's tragic. We do have bills, we have the kids going to college, they have, uh, you know, uh, other things in their lives going wrong other than teaching, that they have to support their children, their families and, uh, health insurance and everything else is, is a big problem. So I hope you guys are going to wrap that up shortly and I hope that you're doing your due diligence to preserve all the money because when you hold out on someone's salary, it comes at a cost. There is going to be back then, there is going to be all that stuff. So hopefully you don't already think you have money to decide so you don't, uh, jerk them in further than you have to. All right. I think one of the views tonight should be accountability because, um, you know, being administrative, you're home, these teachers up to a standard, they have to be accountable. The children have to be accountable. All right? And the reason why I bring this up is, I put out a phone call on Wednesday, on Wednesday of this week. I had a question and a concern about my child. It is not Monday. I put it out Wednesday, last week, I'm sorry. It is not Monday. Right? I still haven't heard back. So to me, that, that is either there was a mix-up in them getting my information, my phone number that I gave to someone I spoke to at the high school, but I did not get a return call and I think that is, that's terrible. We want to help everybody else through a different standard, okay? But the people that were involved, they should be able to do a different standard. Someone puts out a call with a concern to, about their child, they should be immediately called back. So to me, that's unacceptable. All right? So that's, I, I have a lot of other things I want to go over, but that's my main concern is that, and I guess I should address this.
But yeah, let me just, I want to just start off with, with that first concern that you had.
Yeah.
You said, was it a phone call, voicemail, email?
It was a phone call. I left it in my situation room and I left my name and my phone number and I never heard it back. Now, did it get lost? Are you still doing things on a little yellow note, stick it down, putting it somewhere? I don't know. You know?
That's fine. Boy, my, my question is, is that if you haven't done a follow-up, I know, I know, what I always tell people is if you don't get the response from the first person that you've contacted, and there is a follow-up that you change and demand to follow, then just go up the administrative ladder. If that's the case, my best.
Who we spoke to, but I worked three jobs. I had time to make a phone call. I had to make a phone call back. In my line of work, in my line of work, I don't follow up people back. So, I mean, it's not as, as harsh here, but you need to follow up. So, you know, I'm sure I'm going to get a follow-up tomorrow, surely. But I had to come here to bring that out. It was just a.
So off-line, our expectation is that any quality mail is answered 24 hours. It's over a weekend, obviously it's going to be longer. If you'd like after the meeting, tell me who you called, I will make sure you get a call back tomorrow.
Well, I'm hoping I get a call back tomorrow. So, you know, the theme here should be accountability, so, uh, so I want to mention in their, in their presentation, accountability should be the same way for the administrators and not, you know, just not losing, getting on the teachers and getting on the students. We should get on you guys too. Because I'm a taxpayer here and I make a phone call, I want an answer.
We all agree with you.
In light of everything that's going on in the town, I know there's a lot going on and, uh, I feel for the teachers and I really do. And I, and every kid is a different kid, it's a different person to deal with. Some students are easy, some students are hard, sometimes they need to spend more time with others, extra help, I get it. All right? Some kids aren't going to college, they're not the college type of kid, just five kids and we're trying to get them through a school and just let them move on to the next part of their life. But, uh, we don't want to see these teachers, and I know they work very hard, we don't want to see them struggling, interested in their job. I mean, you praise them, I say this every meeting I come to, alls you do is praise them and have great parenting. And look, they didn't quit up. The numbers show it, they're improving, uh, the scores are improving, everything's improved, they're working hard through this, but there has to come a time when you, when you just have to say, let's agree on something. And it's just going on a way.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Can you just sign it for me before you? Thank you.
Uh, hi guys, I'm Madison Peters. I'm seventeen, I'm currently a junior at LA High School. Um, when we go to school, we are taught that we are supposed to grow, we're supposed to learn every day and we are supposed to make every day the most important day. And one of the most important parts about going to school, especially in high school, is making connections with your teachers and learning and just growing as a personnel and all. And when it comes to recommendation letters, you choose teachers who you look up to, teachers who've seen you grow and teachers who you appreciate. And then when you ask them and you get shut down because of a contract, that just breaks all of our hearts. Today, all the kids were crushed, all the kids sitting there were crushed. And how are we supposed to, you know, have had hope to go to a good college and dream big when we're just getting shut down because of a conflict? And yes, it's not right that we're being used, but the fact of the matter is we are being used at the helm. And the fact that we're, you guys aren't going to help us and you're going to continue to let this happen, does it affect our futures? That's how I personally feel and I know that's how my fellow classmates and my students are feeling because we want to make something of ourselves, we want to make something of Nutley, we want to grow and we want to progress out of Nutley and make something bigger of ourselves. And when we're getting shut down and what we can't get, you know, the things other students can, if you go to Bellevue, they don't have this issue, they can get a letter of recommendation. Right now, we're not going to be able to get a letter of recommendation. That's putting our chances to get into a good college or the college that we want and that we've worked so hard to get into, that's going to lower our chances and that's basically it. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry that I didn't hear your first name who just spoke, um, but a couple minutes ago, we just heard that Nutley can be not condone that, but the, um, Education Association of Nutley doesn't condone, we, um, what, what? I'm just going to say to you, we got, we, you heard, um, Mr. Stoffler say that we received, um, a letter today telling us today, uh, that parent was unanswered privately. And I will tell you that we will address that with that leadership, with the association leadership. College recommendation letters, you're absolutely right and critical. All of us want you to be successful. When you're successful, that's our greatest success. And I will tell you again, um, you've already heard it addressed by the, um, association leadership and tomorrow I will get with them also and make sure that there's a clear message for all.
Hi, Sarah Dracke, I'm at twelve Malvern Place, I live in Marana. Um, as the board is considering the negotiations, I would like to speak to the paraprofessionals. Um, I don't know if any of you in particular have had children, um, in the special education program in Nutley, which we're all so incredibly proud of, um, or have had children go through the pre-K or preschool program. Um, these men and women are the lifeblood of that program. I'm not sure if you get to see these men and women who work as paraprofessionals day in and day out. I don't know if you've seen the bruises that they endure day in and day out while they're trying to console children who may be non-verbal or who have emotional difficulties. Um, but I think if you have seen them, that, that might give you just a little smidge of an insight into what they deal with day in and day out for our children in our community. And these are the children who need it the most. They come in every day, they never complain, they miss their lunch, they work right through lunch with these kids because the kids can't be left alone ever. And I just hope you take that at least into consideration because those people in particular bear the brunt of what we do every day.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Saying none, any old business come to the board? Any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, back in February, I requested information regarding the last three years of legal fees impending and settled cases. However, I haven't received anything and it's now the end of April. Uh, when will I be receiving the other pieces?
I'm sorry, Terry, were you looking? Were you looking for?
Back in February, I requested legal fees for all pending, um, for the last three years, pending and settled cases. And I haven't received them and I've been sending reminders and I just want to know when I'll be receiving.
Okay, so I'm going to ask again because you're asking, are you asking for the fee schedules, what we spent, or are you asking for the updates on current, any other type of the, of the cases? So you, you asked for two separate things. You asked for it, you started off by asking about the fees and then you ended up asking about the cases. So which one is it that could we then meet in closed session to review the basis?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so you want the, the actual costs that are, okay. So the cost analysis here of all have counted something, probably, or one?
Thank you.
So, Mark, Mark will be able to put it together for us.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mark. I just have one more thing, just one more thing. Um, I just want to say, not just as a DOE member, but also as the mother of three, that there should be no place in our district or any other district for those who believe that it's okay or, or it's permissible to make others feel uncomfortable or harassed. I, I really truly feel this, not just as mom, but as educator, that every single student and even staff members have a right to feel safe in their environment. Everybody does and nobody can be harassed and it should never be okay. And that's my statement.
Okay, with the Board of Education, we're discussing matters, example of public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten, quote, four dash twelve. Now therefore being resolved, the Board of Education recessed the second session at this time and discussing matters personnel, property, and attorney-client litigation. The Board of Education, especially in the Department of Public Affairs, on the subject of the Board of Education, we will discuss its management and process.